Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, February 5th, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
I'm here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on December 18th, 2019. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or changes? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Mr. Path, second by Mr. Pasak. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a minor sign exception for Olive Garden.
Haley Linville of Midwest Sign and Lighting, on behalf of Olive Garden located at 5590 Northridge Drive, is requesting a minor sign exception to allow the height for lowercase lettering in their main business name to be less than the six inch requirement for lettering and in the tagline to Italian Kitchen to be less than the three inch requirement, specifically on the multi-tenant sign panel along Grand Avenue. Olive Garden is planning to reface their existing multi-tenant sign panel, which is only 9.6 square feet in size. The smallest of the proposed lowercase lettering in their main business name is 3.9 inches tall, while other lowercase letters are slightly larger in the five inch to six inch range. The uppercase lettering in the main business name meets code. The lettering in the tagline Italian Kitchen is .9 inches tall. Trying to retrofit an existing sign with a new face that meets letter height standards adopted after the installation of the sign can be difficult, especially when working with existing smaller multi-tenant sign panels. The minor sign exception process allows for consideration of the above requested amendment. A minor sign exception can be granted by the PZB if they find that the number, size, design, and placement of all proposed signs within the development are consistent with the stated purpose of the sign regulations. The Planning and Zoning Board has the final decision-making authority in this matter.
Thank you, Claire. Does anybody have any questions regarding this topic?
No.
If not, then as Claire indicated, we can approve a minor sign amendment, so a motion to approve as submitted would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second by Mr. Pasak.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Pasak.
Aye.
And Riley.
Aye.
And?
Sula, I'm sorry.
Aye. Okay, so that item is taken care of. Can I ask, are both of you here for the informal review? Okay, so let's just keep the agenda the way it is. All right, next item on the agenda is an informal review for the properties located 32-551 through 32-655 Illinois Route 21. Claire, do you want to start?
Yes.
Staff report.
Thad Gleason, representing Sunrise Development, is seeking feedback on a mixed-use development for approximately 29 acres located on the east side of Route 21, north of the Serbian monastery church, and south of Lake County Grading. The proposed development includes five buildings containing a total of 456 apartment units and 15,000 square feet of restaurant and retail space. The subject property is not located in Gurnee but is contiguous to the village's boundary. The property is surrounded by O1 PUD and R1 PUD property in the village of Gurnee and estate, open space, and limited industrial zone property in the county. The village's current comprehensive land use plan reflects public, quasi-public for the subject property. The draft comp plan reflects industrial mixed-use. The applicant is in attendance to present his proposal.
Okay, thank you. Before we start, this is probably one of my favorite features of the zoning ordinance, an opportunity for someone to come in, bounce some ideas off of us. Just want to remind everybody, it's an informal presentation. There's nothing binding us in the future in terms of anything that we say, or for that matter, anything that they say, because it's just kind of an open-ended feedback type thing. So, I'll let you start. I've got a portable one here.
Good evening. Thanks for meeting with us tonight. I'm Kirk Rustman, part of the development team. We're with William A. Randolph. This site has some challenges to it. It's got about 50 feet of fill over many years, so we have to, we were brought on early to make sure that we could build something here, and that's why we've worked with Thad and the development team to come up with this plan, that we feel pretty confident that we would be able to build it. There's, you know, the foundations on this project are going to be more expensive than most, but we feel as though it's a great use for this property. And, you know, I met with the monastery, the regional council, had a lot of long discussion. They obviously haven't done anything for a long time on this property, and they really would like to see this development go forward. So, talked to Thad and the team, and we came up with this concept, and look forward to hearing your comments about it. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Thad Gleason, the architect, and go from there.
Thank you. I'm Thad Gleason with Gleason Architects. As an introduction, I think Claire made a great introduction to tell you about the beginning of the project. At this point, we don't have an official name, so we're just calling it the Monastery Development until something's arrived at. If you could change the slide. This is the site location, as mentioned, just north of the Serbian monastery, south of the Lake County Grading plant. On our east is the Spanings River, which runs through the property, and on the other side of the river is the bike trail. And the site slopes off, it has a level spot toward the top, which is about halfway across the property, then drops off suddenly into a floodplain area, which will be unbuildable. As I mentioned, there's the bike trails on the other side. Our intention is to try to make a connection to that bike trail, to provide community access to the trail from this side of the river. And if you know the next slide, this is some project data. As was mentioned, it's 29 acres. We're planning on doing five buildings. The total floor area of 540,000 square feet and 456 apartments. Next slide. This is our concept site plan, subject to some revision, but these are the layouts of the buildings. The center building is Building 1. It has a mixed-use. The first floor would be retail and restaurant, and uses haven't been picked out, so it's still to be planned. We're looking at doing this project possibly in a couple of phases. Buildings 1 and 2, first phase, 3, 4, and 5 in the second phase. As you can see, we've set the building, the parking lot back from the street. That's probably going to be where our detention's going to be, along the street. We are actually looking at maybe two access points, one of full access and one is a right-in, right-out. We also have access directly to the Serbian monastery on your right there, and we are possibly talking to the post of the Serbian monastery that we provide parking on their property, that they can use as well as us for overflow parking. Let me go to the next slide. This is Building 1. It's to be a four-story building, 111,000 square feet, 72 dwelling units, predominantly one bedroom. The first story will be commercial, as was mentioned. Go to the next slide. This is the retail. It's under development. We'd have common spaces, resident amenities right inside the entrance there at the front, and then retail and restaurants surrounding it. If you go to the next slide, this is a typical floor plan. One-bedroom units are 818 square feet, two-bedroom units are 1,360 square feet. We have predominantly one-bedrooms in this plan. Go to the next plan. This is Building 2, which is a three-story building, about 134,000 square feet, 100 dwelling units. It's predominantly, again, this is similar, it's predominantly one-bedroom. It's hard to see it, but, and then there's some mix of two-bedrooms. Go to the next slide. This is our first floor plan. We have common areas on the first floor in the center. We have a one-story projection in the back that overlooks the river, where we have a pool and a couple patios for resident use. If you go to the next slide, this is our common floor plan. We have, the one-bedrooms here are 759 square feet, the two-bedroom units are 1,178 square feet, net floor area. If you go to the next slide, this is Buildings 2 and, or 3 and 4. These two buildings are identical. They're four-story buildings. They have, again, 124 one-bedrooms and 23 two-bedrooms. Go to the next slide. That's the first floor. Again, we have some common space on the first floor, including a fitness area, lounge, a kids' playroom, and bike storage. All of our buildings would have bike storage for resident use, so they can use it on the bike trail. Go to the next slide. Buildings 3 and 4, the one-bedrooms are 810 square feet, the two-bedroom units are 1,200 square feet. Go to the next slide. This is, we did a, I think in your package you have, straight-on black-and-white elevation. We did a model of it to try to give you an idea of what the building would look like three-dimensionally and give you some colors. The building is to be a mix of stone and brick and firecement siding above that. We tried to give it a more traditional look with a sloping roof. The four-story buildings would be about 56 feet from grade to the top of the ridge on it. The buildings, we're looking at probably doing modular construction for these facilities, which would mean they would go up very quickly. The modules would be constructed or assembled in a factory, brought in-site and erected on-site. We're also going, because the facilities are affordable, we're getting tax credits, and we're going to be doing a lot of sustainable design and green design to make them energy-efficient as much as we can. Go to the next one. This is the rear view. It's pretty much the same. We've got all the architecture wrapping around the building. Next is, the last building is workforce housing. This is kind of a unique building in that the apartments are relatively small. They have a small kitchenette area for residents, you know, prepare small meals in their apartment, but we also have a commercial kitchen. If you go to the next slide, we have a commercial kitchen with a dining area, which has kind of a restaurant service to it, as well as resident services. This would be available, of course, to all age groups. The units are fairly small. The studio in this building are about 308 square feet, and the one-bedrooms are 480 square feet, 485 square feet. Okay, I think that's...
Last slide? Do you want to add? No, that's... Turn over to questions? Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Garrity.
So, in kind of comparing to other apartment complexes in the village, your 456 units on the 29.12 acres, it's a lot of units, and I guess where my question would be, is a driving force of that number of units to be able to offset any costs of like the 50 feet of fill that is there? What's driving that?
Because the project, because the project is affordable, we're planning on having at least 20%, which would be the requirement for affordable workforce housing, which means that the residents in that portion have to be income-qualified and have 50% of the average median income. They'll be the residents for the affordable portion of the project. Because of that, currently, there's great finance opportunities along with the state tax credit program, so that allows the cost of financing primarily to be substantially reduced for this project. Obviously, we're asking for the large number of units because we need to have a lot of renters to offset the foundation costs. So, that's really what we're looking at for that. But, you know, the...
Right. That's where I was wanting, just to get confirmation that that's what was driving the high number of units.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Edwin? I have a question, well, two. The required parking, is that calculated based on, I guess this is for staff, is that calculated based on the retail space also?
Yes.
Okay. But they're still 350 below. Is the retail space one of the main things that put them over? Do you know?
I don't believe they're meeting the number for the units either, for the residential component.
Yeah, that seems like a big problem to me. I mean, I've run into these issues with apartment complexes like this where there's no room for guests, and that seems like it might be kind of an issue here.
Right. We've, you know, talked to the monastery about that because we are, you know, short on parking, and they have additional property in front of their, they have a building right next to our property that we're under contract with, and we'll put some overflow parking over on their, actually in front of their dormitory building there on their property, and that'll kind of be a shared parking lot for not only the residential portion, but also for, you know, their use if they have some overflow needs from time to time.
That puts it quite a ways from Building 5 or even any of the other buildings on that side of the complex.
Yeah, it would be primarily to service the building to the, to the north, I mean, to the south, correct.
Is there any talk of putting a stoplight in here? That's a lot of cars in it.
I hope not.
No?
Yeah. You know, you have a stoplight right there, not far up at 120, so we have to, I mean, we have to, we honestly haven't discussed that with IDOT. That'll be pretty much up to IDOT, what we can do as far as our actual access into the property, so...
Is there a median in the, in the middle of that, right there?
Well, there is a, there is a median, and there's a curb cut.
Yes.
And there's like a driveway or something. Where is that curb cut in relationship to your site?
The existing curb cut?
Yeah, the existing median, the existing median cut.
Uh...
No, it's farther...
I believe it's right across from that farm across the street, isn't it? I believe...
So, does it match up with one of those driveways there?
So, you've got the driveway into the Merritt Club Golf Course?
Right here.
Right here?
Uh-huh.
And then there is a driveway from the single-family home that's on the other side.
Right there.
Are you sure, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, this is Gurnee Schools, I'm assuming?
Oh, yeah, I see.
Right now, there's a median curb cut, and on the east side of 21, there's like an old driveway with a gate.
On the east side?
On the east side, yeah. There's a median cut?
Are you talking right opposite the ramp?
No, it's farther, it's farther south. I just drove by it.
It's the entrance to the Serbian monastery.
That's where I'm not sure of.
That's right here, right down here.
That goes into the monastery.
But it's gated off.
Yes, correct. That's the monastery with the black iron gate.
It looked like chain link to me.
Yeah, there is a chain link right north, too.
Okay, yeah.
It's right here on this site plan, too?
That's, yeah, that's the one that goes into there.
It's like opposite, it's like opposite a farmhouse that's on the west side.
There's a median.
There's a median, but there's a cut in the median. I used it yesterday or the day before. And the cut in the median goes right into this, there's a curb cut, and there's a fence and a gate, and then there's a concrete driveway that's fairly wide that shoots east, so...
No, you're right. I hung a U-turn there one time, the traffic was all backed up.
Yeah, and I just did it the other day so I could drive past the site.
South end of the site, yeah.
It's at the very south end of the site.
Very south end of the site.
Okay. Would there be any garage parking at all, or is it all exterior parking?
All exterior. This, again, this, we're early on in the concept stage. The biggest thing is we just want to, you know, find out what the council's thoughts are before going forward. At this point, there is no garages figured.
With respect to the foundation, I mean, each building has a foundation. I mean, you could elect to have two, I mean, at some point, what's above the foundation is going to provide the cost, you know, the expense analysis for that structure, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, you don't need to have 456 units. You're making that assessment per structure, right? I mean, I understand that you might have to have certain number of units to pay for that foundation, but as a group, you know, I don't think that really explains why the exceedance in the proposal for, I mean, if you take out the 7.5 undeveloped acres, I mean, you can make an argument, you're putting 21 units per developable acres. And I just have to say, I don't think saying because the foundations are going to cost more actually is directly correlates to, you know, to that concern.
The underlying purchase price of the parcel has to come into play there somewhere as well. Well, I know, but that hasn't been described. I know, I know, I know. I'm agreeing with you, Brian.
There's other, there's other fairly expensive costs that we, I mean, there's no sewer specifically to this site at all, so I have to run 3,000 feet, 2,800 feet of sewer, you know, up to the site, and, you know, fortunately, there's a water main across the street that we can bring in, but, you know, there's other costs with the, this particular site that are extraordinary, I'll call it a little more than average. Plus, with the sewer connection, you know, we have to deal with three sewer agencies, you know, as far as cost and connection costs, et cetera. So, those are very, you know, higher than they would normally be for a project like this.
Edwin, did you have any other questions?
I would just think without a way to get into this facility coming from the north, this would not be something I would want to see because of the number of people that would have to turn around at some point on that street to get back in there. It just...
We believe there would be, IDOT would allow a full access point basically in the center of the site, so there would be, they'd have to put a curb at the deceleration lane so that you could access it to and from the north.
So, you say there'd be another curb cut to the, a median cut?
Yes.
To the, to the, to the north of the one that's already there.
The spacing is adequate up to the signal that's to the north where Lake County Grading is and the 120 ramp. There's enough spacing in there to be able to get the necessary turn lanes and things like that.
Okay.
To be able to get that full access point central to the site.
Got it.
Comments from the commissioners to my left? Josh?
Yeah, I'm just still trying to envision this proposal at that site, which is totally out of place from, from just an independent thinker here. When I drive down that road, I see farmland, the monastery, single-family homes, farms, and I don't, I don't think it's congruent with the intended use that we had in the comp plan, nor does it look like anything around there. Not saying it's wrong, just my feedback, because you're cramming a lot of units in a space that it's just going to be totally out of place for, for what I think it's an industrial mixed-use currently today, so we'd have to evaluate that and take that into consideration long-term, you know, how that land was envisioned to be used, and with, you know, very few two-bedrooms, lots of one-bedrooms, and mostly studios. It just, it seems out of place in that, that part of Milwaukee for me, just based on this proposal. Just some...
Brian, did you have a comment?
I just think it's too dense, and I think it's a group, not a character, surrounding area.
Laura?
I agree.
I also have several issues with it. The first one, just the fact that the zoning isn't at all consistent with what our comp plan has, and comp plans are designed to have a balance of various uses so that as a community, we're self-sufficient, and I need to understand how this wouldn't throw the balance out of whack, because it's, it's a lot of units, okay? I think the degree of parking that's under code is a gamestopper in my mind. That's, I mean, if it was, you know, 5%, or less, I could see it, but this is huge, and the solution of having shared parking with the monastery just doesn't seem practical to me based on the site layout. And based on what you're saying, I'm assuming that the existing grade's going to remain the same, and right now, I'm not a trained surveyor or anything, but there's got to be at least, what, 30 feet difference in grade level between Route 21 and the property?
Probably sits up, probably 15 feet above it.
Is it 15?
Milwaukee Avenue, yeah.
Okay, and I didn't walk the site, but I mean, because when you drive by, I mean, it's, it looks like a huge berm right now. I mean, it's, it's way up there, and then to put four-story buildings on top of that, and I'm not really good at math sometimes in terms of mass of buildings, but I suspect each one of these buildings is pretty close in size to the Stonebridge Development.
Yeah, that's a 100-unit building, so...
Yep, I mean, that's, and to have five of them crammed in, I mean, it's, it's not attractive. And then also, given the fact that the parking is so under-provided, there's, there's no amenities nearby that are practically, practically used. I mean, people, people can't walk to shopping, can't walk to services. I mean, there's like, it's like an island, if you will. I mean, it just, it just doesn't make sense to me to have it in that particular location.
And I can't see the residents of the Merritt Club being super happy about that.
Can I go ahead and add something?
Sure.
So, I asked a question, I'll kind of give you my assessment as well. Like the other commissioners, I do feel that the density is an issue. I do see, though, that I know that the mayor and the village are taking a look at wanting to be able to expand affordable housing, so I think it's admirable. I might, I do feel it's an island, but I do feel like there might be something there. I would encourage you to look at balance. If you had something that was, you know, affordable, yet with maybe less units, maybe with underground parking, not so many, kind of a balance of, I'm not saying higher end, but upper-middle-class, and then with the affordable housing in another building, and you have less cars that are parked, and there's less units overall, maybe going back in and taking a look at a balance might be something that would sway the commissioners.
It would take a heck of a lot to sway me. I'll be, I'll be very honest.
Remind the, you know, the board members that you're really looking at the use. You know, some of the things that you talked about would eventually come up. But at this level, you're really talking about...
Well, it's a form, right?
...comprehensive plan, and that, you know, that would be...
I mean, that's, that's...
...down the road, and they have those type of discussions. I think at this point, you know, comparing this to the comprehensive plans and the comments about how it would fit are very important to consider for petition.
Part of the...
Go ahead.
Part of it was that this is a buffer zone? But what are we trying to buffer here? I'm not for this, but I'm just...
Well, typically, a buffer zone is when you're going from one use to the other use. In this case, we'd be looking at an appropriate buffer between Lake County Grading and another use. So, I mean, that's, that's an issue, too. I mean, Lake County Grading is kind of like an industrial setting. And to have, to have, you know, multifamily housing or any type of residential right next to...
A grading company?
A grading company, I'm not sure that that, that there's an appropriate, you know, buffer between one use and another use.
Does that fill from the grading company, do we know?
Yep. Well, they, they were, they were spreading a lot of it, but I don't know what their contractual was. It's been going on for a long time, so...
So, I mean, you know, the grading and construction issues are a whole separate animal in my mind. What we should be focused on is whether or not that's an appropriate use of the property.
Yeah, I think for my concern right now is the density would be my concern.
And my primary concern is it's like 180 degrees different from what the comp plan is calling for.
Yeah, it's just out of character.
Yeah, and there's not a buffer between a fairly, I'll call it like an industrial use and, and, and housing. I mean, to me, it's not something that is good planning, so... Okay. We're always candid.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for taking the time.
All right.
Okay. The next item on the agenda are several public hearings. That are all presented by staff, so Claire...
Would you like to tackle one at a time?
Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, let's tackle them one at a time because we're going to need several votes on it, on each of them.
Okay. So, the first one is a text amendment regarding vehicle repair service, minor and major, and that's Article 8.2.32 of the zoning ordinance. Currently, the zoning ordinance requires that vehicle repair or service establishments are screened along interior side and rear lot lines with a solid wall or fence a minimum of five feet in height. This seems unnecessary when the vehicle repair or service establishment butts in industrial or commercial use or district. This amendment will ensure that vehicle repair or service establishments are properly screened when adjacent to less intense residential or office districts, but will no longer require unnecessary screening. Staff is proposing to address these concerns by changing Article 8.2.32. C to say that vehicle repair service establishments must be screened along any interior side and rear lot lines abutting residential or office districts or uses with a solid wall or fence a minimum of five feet in height.
Questions from members of the board? Brian, with your permission, I'm going to forego opening and closing the floor to the public that there's nobody here.
All right, well, yeah.
Wow, that was cruel.
I mean, I'll just acknowledge that there's nobody here.
Right, the man should reflect there is no one here.
Okay.
You would open up the floor, seeing no one present, continue.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Makes sense to me.
Okay. Do we have a motion? And this would be in, this would be in the nature of a recommendation to the village board.
Make a favorable recommendation to the village board for the language as proposed.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. Mr. Gary, okay. Roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paysek.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
And Sula.
Aye. Motion carries. As you know, the village board has the final say on this matter. All right, next one?
Yes.
Is home occupations?
Home occupations, and that's Article 10.2.12. The village recently received an inquiry as to whether massage is allowed as a home occupation. Currently, only the repair and service of vehicles or industrial machinery is expressly prohibited as a home occupation. Staff surveyed nearby municipalities and found that only two would allow massage as a home occupation, and that's unincorporated Lake County and Grayslake, both of which would still require a massage license. And four would not allow this, and that was Libertyville, Vernon Hills, Mundeline, and Waukegan. Staff decided to propose an amendment to prohibit massage as a home occupation, which is consistent with the village's current regulations on massage service establishments and business districts. Including that massage service establishments are only ever allowed as a special use in certain non-residential districts. That massage service establishments are required to be located 1,000 feet from residential property. And that massage service establishments need massage license through the Village of Gurnee to operate, which will not be issued if the locational requirements are not met. Do you want to go through each of these or cover one at a time?
Let's cover one at a time, and then we can just do one vote on the home occupation as a category, but let's have discussion, discussion on each, each topic. I guess first I have a question. Brian, are, are you okay with carving out something like this?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's being done.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I mean, just from a legal standpoint, I just want to let this...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, no, 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 no.
...but other municipalities. And in fact, I can speak to that as to all of these four items. We're finding these in other, other municipalities. And I know Claire is going to talk about some of these, too, as to the rationale behind making that express exclusion.
Okay. Yes?
The auto repair vehicle service. Why is that an issue if they were doing that within their, their garage? I mean, if we allow landscape, as long as it's contained, what's, what's the issue there?
They were having vehicles that were partially repaired, stored on the lot. It wasn't just one vehicle being repaired at one time. So, there were three or four vehicles on the property in waiting for repair or waiting to be picked up. And it got to be an issue with just not reflecting a residential character. We couldn't go after them in terms of a violation because of commercial vehicles, because they were residential vehicles. And the repair often occurred with garage doors open, so it caused noise. They caused a lot of issues.
And how long have they been prohibited?
I'm sorry.
How, how long have they been prohibited?
Probably 12, 15 years.
So, it has been prohibited already?
Prohibited for 12 or 15...
Yeah, the auto repair part has been prohibited for a long time.
Yeah. Claire, Claire was just pointing out that we're proposing to add, in addition to that one that we have, we're looking to prohibit massage, astrology, card, palm reading, and landscaping businesses where equipment, supplies, and plant material are stored on-site outside. If you're storing those materials inside a permitted structure or an accessory structure, then you can do that. But once you start storing those, those materials and equipment outside, it would be prohibited.
Just, just, just to me, just one thing, just to clarify. We're talking about home occupations in residential districts. The, the last item that we just voted on was dealing with auto repairs that are in a permitted district to have auto...
I do understand that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, my, my thought was if somebody was doing it properly inside their garage, of course, they probably would never get in trouble anyway. Nobody's going to show up. Would engine repair be part of that? I mean, if it wasn't in the vehicle?
We probably wouldn't know that that was occurring. I mean, if we got noise complaints, then we could go after them for that. But it was really the, the number of vehicles that were being stored on a property, garage doors being left open, vehicles in various states of repair awaiting repair while another one was in the garage being repaired. So, again, a lot of the home occupation issues that we have are, we're responding to complaints.
Okay, got it. I would just surprise if it wasn't, if it was contained in the garage. But the noisy issue, I guess I could see, although I know of people who do engine repair and don't make any noise, so...
Yeah, they often have their doors open in the summertime.
Got it.
So, my question would be, you know, just anecdotally, driving throughout the village, I do see some astrology, card, palm reading, fortune telling. Homes, it looks like, I don't, while I'm driving around, I don't carry unincorporated versus incorporated map with me. So, does this going to...
We're not to that one yet, though. We're still...
Oh, we're still on that one, okay.
We're, we're, we're talking about the massage part.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought we're, all four were in discussion.
We're handling the topics individually as discussion, and then we're going to vote on this group.
Got it, got it, my bad.
Okay. Yes.
I mean, I, I can't see where a massage would, you know, interrupt a neighborhood as well. I, I mean, what are we, what are we talking about? I mean, like, people cutting hair in their house, that type of thing? I mean, we, what kind of...
I think the concern is that we don't even allow massage establishments by right in commercial districts. You have to go through a special use permit. You have to go through licensing. There's separation requirements. Those separation requirements include separation from residential properties. So, it seems counterintuitive to allow it as a home occupation when you can't even do it by right in a commercial district when you're adjacent or within a certain distance of residential.
Aren't we already covered, though? Because if you can't have a massage therapy business within 1,000 feet of a residential...
This is clarifying that because that was the question. Is a home occupation really a business, you know, that needs to have the license? Because home occupations aren't, we don't issue business licenses for them. So, then do they really need to get a massage establishment license? So, this is a clarification because it was kind of a gray area. When this person talked to us about potentially moving into a residential district for this, we decided we needed to do some research and figure out what other communities were doing. And we looked at how we treat these types of businesses in commercial. And because of the way that we classify them as special uses and because of the way that we license them, we determined that the most appropriate for Gurnee was to just prohibit them like the other communities that we surveyed.
I would add with massage, although I could apply to any four of these, I am in favor of not allowing that from the standpoint of, I think that most residents get annoyed with having a twice-a-year garage sale to be operating a massage parlor or anything else out of your home with traffic coming in. It does not seem sustainable to having happy neighbors, so that's my thought.
Well, we allow childcare, right? We allow...
Up to...
Six.
Right. Yeah.
And again, this was more because of trying to, trying to look at how we treated this type of business in our commercial districts. And the fact that we don't allow it by right in commercial, why should it be allowed by right in residential with the separate? And then including the fact that we have a separation requirement from residential.
I get that. What, what is the issue? May I ask that massage parlors, how, do they, their clientele?
I, I think that, from my perspective, I mean, calling it a massage parlor in itself sounds...
Oh, well, I guess so, yeah.
It sounds offensive.
Massage establishment.
Massage business.
Well, I mean...
Google rubber.
Like they do athletic...
A more professional term for it would be a massage therapy clinic.
Right.
When, when you start calling it a parlor, it, it has...
Operating a clinic from your home?
It has a whole different nuance to it, so...
Well, you know, one of the distinctions, too, you talked about childcare. Usually the drop-off is, you know, morning to pick up in the afternoon. They don't always have to be. But massage and some of these others, you know, there could be multiple all day long.
Right, but...
People could be upcoming.
Maybe after work, 9 o'clock at night, I may want a massage at my neighbor's house.
Somebody could do hair in their house, right? So, I wouldn't think the clientele would be coming and going any more rapidly than in a, than somebody doing hair. And I know that somebody in my neighborhood does it, or used to, and I never even knew she did it until I talked to her one time. So, I don't know how she managed to get people in and out of there. I, I just was wondering...
Who is this neighbor?
But from my perspect, from my perspective, if we don't allow a licensed business in, in a commercial district to be within 1,000 feet of a residence, to me, to not exclude them like you're proposing here is a pretty severe inconsistency.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I agree, too. And I get that we're trying to address an inconsistency here. But I don't, I, I just, maybe I don't fully understand why the village has chosen to single out massage or spa or these types of arrangements. I, I don't fully understand that because I related to hair or cosmetics treatments. You know, I, I had a back injury and I, I got a back massage and it really helped. But I had to go to Libertyville. And I'm just wondering, you know, where do we draw the line? And I think that's what you were trying to pick out, which is massage, spa. I don't understand how that is getting singled out.
Yeah.
Can we...
Yeah, you know, I don't understand the 1,000-foot rule either. I mean, to be honest, I mean, I go to a, a therapy clinic in Libertyville, and it's right next door...
To the movie theater?
Yeah, it's very close to the movie theater. And it's right next, I mean, there's, it's right next door to a residential house. So, I mean, for Libertyville to say that they don't allow massage therapy clinics in a residential area...
That, that, that business is actually...
It's a home occupation.
Yeah, that business is in, it's a converted house.
It's a converted house, yeah.
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 I really struggle with that one. I, I don't quite understand it.
All I, all I can tell you is that we surveyed other communities, put the question before the board. This is how they wanted to address this type of use.
But, but given the fact that we already don't allow it within 1,000 feet of a residence, I, I, I find little logic to allow it as a home occupation. So, I, I concur with what staff is proposing. You want to talk about tea leaves now?
So, the next one, staff is suggesting adding is astrology, card, and palm reading or fortune telling to the list of prohibited home occupations. In our experience, this use relies heavily on advertising to walk-in or drive-by traffic, i.e. location on major roads or intersections, use of illuminated signage and signage on vehicles, et cetera. This is not consistent with our home occupation standards, which state that signs, displays, or activities that indicate from the exterior that the structure is being used in part for any purpose other than that of a residence are prohibited. And that's with the exception of a non-illuminated two-square-foot wall sign.
So, I'll go back to my original question, which was, would this affect any existing businesses within the Village of Gurnee boundaries?
Not currently within the village, but we have had this type of business in the past. And as Clara said, we've had issues with them putting illuminated signs and vehicles up front and other issues that clearly are not consistent with home occupations.
Yeah, so I go with, you know, would I want this, if, you know, would I want my neighbor to do this? And a clear answer to me is no, so...
Okay, so, so I have a different perspective.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
I, I, I go back to, I, I don't have a problem with massage or the astrology card or palm reading or fortune telling in a home, as long as it's not disturbing the neighbors. I, I totally agree that there should be no signs displaying these occupations, like, like there's that, that car that was on Grand and the, the fortune telling signs. It, it, that, that should not be allowed in a residential area. I get it. But, but what we're doing here with these... But, but what we're doing here with these, with this, this wording is you're not allowing, um, occupations in people's homes that may or may not impede the, the, you know, their neighbors to live their life comfortably without ever knowing. And that, that's kind of, how do you draw that line? Where do you draw the line?
Yeah, I guess I, I have the same kind of question for staff. I mean, on the massage aspect, I can point to something in the business code that addresses inconsistency, but what makes this one different?
Just our experience of high advertising, high signage, high traffic, reliance on the drive-by impulse, you know, is what they're trying to appeal to. Our experience has shown us that that's what they need to operate their business, which is not consistent with how residential, building, district, should be. So, knowing that this is not a business type that is a discreet business that the neighbors wouldn't know about and knowing that they have operated in the village and operate within the boundaries of the village now, um, in the manner that they are, we felt inappropriate that this is a business type that really has no business in a residential neighborhood.
Do, how do other surrounding communities address this or not address this?
So, we.
Found two or three. The City of Chicago prohibits.
City of Chicago, definitely prohibits.
I think Carol Stream and Lyle or somebody, and we found a handful that also prohibit this type of business as a home occup.
Not as consistent as some of the other.
Right.
Occupations, but we have had a handful of other instances where they have prohibited that in residential.
Okay, and I haven't looked at it, at the zoning map in a long time for this sort of detail, but the existing operation on Grand Avenue across from Burger King is not in the village, correct?
It's not in the village.
Really? That's what I was gonna ask about.
Oh, that's on a corporate lake county.
Ah, wow.
Yes, Josh.
Is there a way to address the signage versus?
Code enforcement. It, it would be a code enforcement, and that's our history or experience with this is it's an ongoing code enforcement issue with their vehicles. They have the psychic reading and materials on them that they park parallel to Grand in violation with code. And so, it, it's trying to nip that.
So, we already have a, a, a mechanism to nip the, the home advertisement in place, in the signage?
Right, right. Right.
Do we have any fines for, so can't we make money off of that?
Issue is, in all honesty, the tenants, most of the, the instances in the past have been landlord tenants. We have the ability to go after the property owner, not necessarily the tenant.
Oh, that would make it difficult, yeah.
So, prohibiting it as a home occupation, how is that any less of a code enforcement issue than what we have right now?
It's an absolute, it's not, uh, you know, maybe around the edges, it's an absolute, you know, prohibition, you know? If we can see it, if we can, then it would, if we can see any evidence of it, it would be a no-go. If, you know, we can't see it, it'd be difficult for us to try to utilize code enforcement on it. But, uh, it, it's still getting to the same point, but, you know, just an absolute prohibition, you know, removed any constant, uh, discussion about it. So, historically, they've been creative. They start with a, the small sign on the front, and they put the neon sign on the window that doesn't have any language on it. It's a Christmas decorations.
Right.
Then they put the car.
Car parks in the driveway.
And then they move the car. And then they park the car.
And tires are all flat. So, it's, it's, uh, you know, they've, they've been creative in trying to work around the edges of the code in the past. This is just an absolute prohibition, which would be easier to enforce.
Is the house on Stern School and Hunt Club?
Nope. It is not in the village.
It's not in the village, uh.
The only one that we've had was closer to Grand Mill Shopping at the corner of Grand and 21. There was a house there on the south west corner, and that's the one that we've had in the past history on trying to get the psychic van moved and then it moving back and.
Okay, any, any other discussion on this one? Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
I, I still struggle with these, and, and I think it's crossing a line. Um, I get the, what you're trying to enforce, but I just have to voice this because I, I, I relate it to another occupation that might seem more wholesome, right? I am a wealth management professional, and I run a business from my home. And I have a magnet on the side of my car. My neighbors might hate that. I have customers visiting me at my home in my home office. Is that illegal now? Because I, it, it's a wholesome business. I'm making a lot of money. And I'm providing a service. Some might think it's greedy and unsavory, just like fortune telling may be unsavory, or massage may be unsavory, even though there's a service being provided. I, I, I struggle with that because it's like, who are we to decide what is savory or not savory? I, I, I get this sign enforcement, but what, what you're talking about is someone's home occupation is different to me.
And, and Josh, there's no right or wrong. We're just proposing these changes based upon our experience. So, you can certainly.
Just voicing it.
Right, and that's right.
Well, I would just add that I've worked from home for, you know, until recently, 23 years and, um, you know, I feel comfortable if I want to have a client come over or something like that. I, I, I still would say that I would expect my neighbors to be very upset if I switched my business from working in, uh, the consumer packaged goods industry, moving to astrology, or, um, opening up a massage parlor or clinic, however you wanna call it. So, I'm willing to do that differentiation. Um, I hear you, what you're saying. I also subscribe to the whole less government, um, as well, um, intrusion. But I think that where I'm coming down on this is the common sense and the shoe is on the other foot. We've heard that in the news lately. Um, angle of what would I want my neighbor to do? And that's where I understand it's kind of a close call, but I'm gonna err on the side of what the village is requesting.
It depends also which businesses are more appropriate in terms of conditions. Now, which ones can easily create into a residential district, and which ones really should be the exception.
I mean, typically, in my opinion, home occupations are more suited toward one-on-one interaction. Like a financial services consultant, or a hairdresser, or childcare, um, or massage.
Or palm reading?
Or palm reading. I mean, I mean, I, I, I gotta tell you, I gotta tell you, I don't find, and, and please don't, don't take this wrong, but I don't find the argument that it's hard to enforce a code and that's why we should change something. I don't.
And that, and that's fine.
And.
I, I have no problem with that.
Okay, uh, I mean, that's, that's what people are paid to do, and they should do their jobs.
Cannot argue with that.
Yeah, okay.
But, but I think it is telling that, you know, um, people have recited locations where they do see the signage. And, uh, that really appreciates kind of the business model, that they are dependent on drive-by. And that really doesn't lend itself then, you know, to, to a home occupation. When you're dependent on the, you know, the, the traffic on the road to have that type of signage. So, it isn't just, you know, the, the signage. The board is aware that these businesses, when they emerge, they're going to have signs, which you've been told would not be permitted in a residential.
Right.
That does create a, uh, an issue, but I think you can dig deeper and say that really isn't, you know, consistent with the, with the residential and home occupation, where you're not really, where you're, you're now soliciting businesses or customers from passerbys. That's historically been more of a commercial zoning than a residential zoning.
Right, and, and where, my thought on this is, if, if someone's own personal business model allows them to do their home occupation within the constraints of what's allowed in terms of signage, and they're happy with the onesie-twosie word-of-mouth, who, who am I to judge? And I, I agree a hundred percent. We don't want flashing signs and, you know, you know, all kinds of distractions. But if someone is a pseudo-hobby and making a few bucks on the side, doing it as a home occupation, and it's not disruptive to the neighborhood, and they're following the codes, I personally don't have a problem with that particular one. I, I view this one differently from the massage parlor or massage therapy clinic. Um, because we don't allow those to be close to our residential districts in the commercial, as a commercial operation. So, I, I can see the delineation there, but, um, frankly, astrology and, and financial consulting are, they're, they're all looking into the future. And, and I'm a CPA, Josh, so I can say that, okay? But, um, it's, yeah.
Uh, to me, the astrology end of it, I think we can say that even amongst the board members here, we've talked about different locations. I don't wanna use the word notorious, but we, we tend to know where they are around town. Um, and we need to take a look at how their neighbors feel, um, where they're at. There's signs, there's people coming, uh, might be all day, all night. You think of astrology. I don't know, is this one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning? I don't know. Well, I don't know what they're doing. I just wouldn't want my neighbor to do that with or without sign. Um, I, 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 I know that more than likely, they'd probably wanna put it in the home on Grand Avenue, but man, what if they wanna put it in Pembroke? I don't know. I, 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 I just would rather not have that, and just my point.
Okay, um, let's move on to landscaping businesses.
Yes.
There's more.
Staff is also suggesting adding landscape business where equipment, supplies, or plant material is stored on-site, except when within a fully enclosed permitted dwelling unit or accessory structure. This type of operation is already prohibited by the Commercial Vehicle Parking Ordinance and Home Occupation Standards, which state that home occupations and all related activity, including storage, must be conducted completely within the dwelling unit or permitted accessory structure. However, staff continues to receive inquiries regarding landscaping businesses as home occupations, and adding this provision may help to provide clarity.
My attitude on home occupations, as it relates to this aspect, is if the business operation is doing something that changes the appearance or character of the residential feel, it shouldn't be allowed. Now, if it's properly, if screening solves a problem, or putting it in a building solves a problem, okay, but, um, I, I don't wanna see garden tractors parked, you know, in front yards. I don't wanna see, um.
Yeah, and that's why we're.
Landscaping materials piled in driveways, I mean.
And we're saying that is prohibited already by the Commercial Parking Ordinance and Home Occupation Standards. We have just received a lot of inquiries regarding landscaping businesses, and we are thinking that, you know, if we're adding these other uses that are prohibited, that this would be a place to add in, um, that this is prohibited, which is consistent with the rest of our code.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Cause sometimes.
It sounds like it's redundant and reinforcing?
Yes, well, so, it's, it's kinda already in the code by the prohibition in the home occupation of any outdoor storage.
Mm-hmm.
Or display or whatever. But then, in another section, we have the Commercial Vehicle Parking section and a prohibition in residential, and a lot of times, people will look online at the home occupations, glance through this, and not pick up that they can't park their end loader or whatever on the property 'cause it doesn't specifically say commercial vehicle, or vehicle, or landscape vehicle, or whatever.
Okay.
So, we are just clarifying. It really is already prohibited by those two provisions in the code. If you can do it interior to your accessory structure, if you can put your, you know, your end loader, backhoe, or whatever, and your mulch, or whatever, inside, then we have no issue with that. And that is.
So, it's, it's eliminating a, a cross-reference issue?
Yeah, it, it, right.
Okay.
Ties them together.
Okay. Any other discussion on that one? Can I make a suggestion that we make three separate motions on those three items?
Sure.
Cause I personally would vote differently on, on some of them. So, so, is anybody willing to advance a, a motion in the form of a recommendation to the village board as to the handling of massage services?
I'll make a favorable or a motion to submit a favorable recommendation to the village board to include massage establishments as a prohibited home occupation.
We have a motion by Mr. Bow. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Path. Roll call, please.
Bow?
Aye.
Garrity?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Payzak?
Nay.
Riley?
Aye.
And Sula?
Aye, motion carries. Is anybody willing to advance a motion to prohibit astrology card, palm reading, and fortune telling as a home occupation?
So, I will make a motion to recommend to the village board that astrology, card, and palm reading, or fortune telling be added to the list of prohibited home occupations.
Motion by Mr. Bow. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrity. Roll call, please, Joanne.
Bow?
Aye.
Garrity?
Aye.
Path?
Nay.
Payzak?
Nay.
Riley?
Aye.
And Sula?
Nay, so we have a three-three tie, which is not a recommendation to the village board. Okay, uh, landscape business modification.
Make a favorable recommendation, um, that we, we add the landscape business where equipment and supplies or plant material is stored on-site, except when within a fully enclosed permitted dwelling unit or accessory structure as, um, a prohibited home occupation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Payzak, second by Mr. Bow. Roll call, please.
Bow?
Aye.
Garrity?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Payzak?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
And Sula?
Aye, motion carries.
You know, that we're just a recommendation to the village board.
Okay.
Can we add financial services?
Doesn't bother, doesn't bother me. I don't work out of my home.
Let's add electricians. Let's add locksmiths. They have signs. It's.
I predict.
All right, we should, we should continue on with the.
Yes, we should, okay. The special science, okay.
Where's the fortune teller say?
Clara, you have the floor.
Yes, so, this one is for signs requiring special use approval, Article thirteen dot fifteen dot one. And the zoning ordinance only allows neon tubing outside of the sign face with a special use permit. However, an amendment is needed to clean up an existing contradiction in the zoning ordinance. And that is, uh, in Article thirteen point two point one, prohibited signs and sign characteristics. And Article thirteen point fifteen point one, signs requiring special use approval. The first of which states that neon tubing outside of the sign face is prohibited. And the latter of which currently states that in the C three district, neon tubing outside of the sign face is prohibited, requiring special use approval. Staff is proposing to remedy these conflicting sections by changing Article thirteen point fifteen point one C to say that any installation of neon tubing or LED tubing and other similar lighting outside the sign face requires special use approval, even when such installation is part of an architectural element or feature of the building or structure. For the purposes of these regulations, each linear foot of such lighting or tubing is considered one square foot of sign area. And just to clarify, the only part that we're taking out there is in the C three district, and then that language following.
Ah, okay. I read it like six times.
Easy to understand. Teasy button. I, I am, I, I guess I'm not the only one. I'm having a hard time with the conceptual. I'm a visual learner.
Yeah.
Um, and so, I'm, what, what's the practical, what, what, what exactly are we talking about with the sign? Could someone maybe explain a little bit?
So, neon tubing that rims the top of a building, um, what? Like Chuck E. Cheese. So, that requires a special use. You can't just do that by right. The code says that you need a special use permit to. a special use permit to do that, and then in one section, it says that you can only do it in the C3 district. So, we're just removing that from the C3, that C3 reference to say, you can do it, but you need a special use permit, and every linear foot counts as a square foot of sign.
Okay. Historically was an aesthetic issue going back many, many years on neon signs, or neon tubing, and with the advent of LED lights, they're a little softer, and so it's...
It's the same, though, they're treated the same.
I, I know they're treated the same, but...
Right.
With LED technology, they're not as garish as the neons used to be.
Did, did we have the specification that it, that a linear foot equaled a square foot before?
Yes, yep.
Okay, because didn't they do that on the BP gas station when they put that in?
Yep.
That's a lot of signage then, when you look at the length of the tubing around the canopy. Okay.
They usually get a special use to exceed the amount also.
Got it.
Yeah, someone else did it, I can't think who it was.
We had, just about every restaurant in Northridge Plaza had it, Outback Steakhouse and whatever the other restaurants were that were in there.
Krabs, Joe's Krabs, yeah.
There for a while, it was like every restaurant was rimming the top of their building or outside their, around the windows, storefront windows, they were using it, and we decided we needed to get control over it, because it was an attention-attracting device, which is what a sign was, and that's why we required the special use.
Okay, yep.
Okay, is anybody willing to advance a motion?
Make a favorable recommendation to the board to change the sign requiring special use approval, Section 13 point 15 point one, as it's worded.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pazak, second by Mr. Bow. Can we, roll call, please?
Bow?
Aye.
Garrity?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Pazak?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
And Sula?
Aye, motion carries. Next meeting is in two weeks. I assume we're still on track for a review of the cap plan update?
Yes.
Good. There's nobody here from the public, so a motion to adjourn to be order, in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.